What's happened in the past, and this is the reason why we staff up the way that we do. As you can see, when fire gets into dunes, that's a nightmare for the fire department. It's a nightmare for the people who were in those hotels or the owners of those properties, and even private dwellings that get impinged by a brush fire. So what are we doing for planning? The Fourth of July planning focuses on all the things you see below. We also have to keep on the top of our minds, we have to also protect the city just like we do every other day, because not everyone goes out to the beach. They're still at home, they're still having block parties and having fun. We focus on education, fire prevention, and fire suppression. As far as education goes, today we have a little opportunity for some, a short bit of education. Fire prevention, we issue burn permits and we kind of keep an eye out for that, and thankfully for all of our neighbors, they're pretty vigilant on letting us know when they suspect there's an illegal burn somewhere, particularly when it's near the dunes or something else that's combustible. And we focus on fire suppression. The education piece has started. I did the radio show with Tom last, a week ago Monday, and we spent a good 25 minutes of the hour talking about the Fourth of July and how to prepare your property, by the way, which is removing everything combustible away from your house at least five feet. Next slide. We use a system called the Incident Command System, which was adopted shortly after 9/11 by a presidential disaster, Presidential PDD, I forget the acronym. But Incident Command System is a management tool used so that we can maintain command and control of any incident, large or small. It's a very scalable system, so you only use the pieces of the Incident Command System as needed. But it also is valuable in providing a manageable span of control, because we're going to have 29 people on duty that day in all areas of the city and on that wide span of beachfront, and one person cannot be in charge of that many people with those many functions going on at the same time. So you need a management tool in place to provide that command and control. It also provides a plethora, because it's a federal government system, you can imagine there's a plethora of forms, and I brought one such form tonight, and it's the ICS 202, which tells us the incident objectives. The incident objectives, there's a handout on one of the tables in the front, the next slide. The incident objectives cover things as, such as safety, we're going to provide for the safety of responders and the public, we're going to establish unified command if it gets out of control with the police department and like the public works. We're going to establish an overwatch to observe activities along the beach area, and while we strategically stage all of our response vehicles. We're going to coordinate with Avert to establish a couple of first aid stations as we have in the past, and they do far more than that. They also hand out garbage bags when people are driving in, they direct people where to go and park. And if you've been down there with a vehicle, you can see how difficult it is maneuvering around all the vehicles that park so haphazardly. If you're having a problem, imagine the problem that an ambulance has to get down there to a patient that needs us. We'll be delineating a 100-foot barrier between the beach and the dunes for a no-burn, no-firework zone. We'll be doing that several days prior to July 2nd. The objectives also provide for basic and advanced life support response teams. Objectives are also to extinguish any fire that occurs frequently, whether that's in a garbage pail, a dumpster, or in the brush. And we will provide a communication plan to all the responders that need it, so we'll understand who's on what radio frequency, who the primary contact people are with their cellphone numbers, through all those key incident personnel, so that we don't have any trouble communicating. So for the staffing plan, we're going to have one 12-hour brush rig with two firefighters each day on the second and the third, and they'll be patrolling the beach and responding to different types of calls down in that area. We'll have five people as normal staffing the fire station. A reminder, fireworks are allowed on the second and third, however, only from noon until 11:00 PM. High tide, we always pay attention to the tide because that has an impact. Last year, we ended up with a high tide rolling in about midnight. By the time the traffic jam cleared enough to get most of the vehicles out, we had to tow four cars out of the water. And that's not a good situation, particularly in one vehicle, there was an infant in the baby seat. The next slide will tell us that on the fourth, the actual day, we're going to branch out into two divisions. We're going to have the fire station division and a beach division. Each one will be staffed by an officer. At the station, we'll have our normal medic rigs there, two medic rigs, an aid rig, an engine, ladder company. The fire marshal will be here, and his responsibility on the fourth is he's going to drive around the city, he's going to look for or respond to illegal burns and fireworks that are getting out of control that are not on the beach. But the heaviest focus will be on the beach. So we'll have our side-by-side, which can pretty much maneuver anywhere in the dunes, and it carries a little bit of water and a little bit of hose. And what we do, and I'll show you a picture in a little while, that we get to the front of the fire, we normally wouldn't do this this way in a typical house fire, but in a brush fire, we're going to be facing the wind, so we're going to get ahead of the fire and stand in front of it and block the fire from getting past us. By the time the side-by-side sets up to do that, we have another two brush units with seven other firefighters. Also, each of those brush units carries some quantity of water and plenty of fire hose. We're also going to post lookouts on Taurus and the Ocean Lake Way approaches, and again, Avert with aid stations. And the tides at the third, we're going to be at seven feet, eight inches at around 5:00. And on the fourth, 5:00, same, seven feet, eight inches. All right, so we'll have a total of 29 firefighters covering the city and the beach. We'll have Avert, again, with their, we can't do this without Avert, and a bulldozer. And a bulldozer will be staged at the fire station with a driver operator for the 12-hour operational period on the Fourth of July, so that if we need to, we can get a bulldozer out there within 15 minutes and cut a fire break if the fire, God forbid, does get into the dunes. Problem is, education and fire prevention oftentimes on events like this are not enough. And we cannot control a lot of the things that affect the fire danger, such as, what time is that tide coming? As I mentioned last year, towing four vehicles out of the ocean. Wind, wind can shift at a moment's notice, wind can get stiff, it can get very, very breezy down there, as you know, and something gets in the dunes, we've got to get ahead of that really, really quickly. Once that wind kicks up, we're working hard. It also depends on the day of the week that the Fourth is on. If it's a Wednesday, we have a lighter crowd. When it's a Friday, we've got a very long four- and five-day weekend with a lot of crazy people out here from out of town. There are no crazy people that live in town, thank goodness, but there's a lot of people that come here that don't live here, and that is a source of a lot of problems. I think this might be the final slide. So here's a picture of a brush fire that got out of control some years ago, and you can see the size of that. DNR had to come in and help with that because we didn't have enough people. So a fire of that size, and you can see the private dwellings that it's almost impinging on, and thank God, between our crews and the DNR crews, we got to that fire quick enough and controlled it quick enough that it only scorched the siding on one house. So we got away with something, and we dodged a bullet, thank goodness. And I think that's the end of that, and if there are any questions, I could take questions.
Yes, we'll take questions. I just, I talked with Chief Ritter, and one of the things that they're going to have out there on the beach is flags with some lights on it, so they'll have a green flag, a red flag, and they'll be spaced out, so if anybody has an issue or a problem, they can contact the police or the fire department and say, hey, I'm south of the red flag, or I'm north of the green flag, so that will help speed up the help from our first responders on that. And then another thing is the Hydune Trail is going to be open for families. Okay, that's, we're going to try to make that family-friendly. You can't shoot any fireworks off of there, and that's going to be patrolled by Avert, and so you can take your chairs, set them up, and be back off the beach, but still see the fireworks. And so that's the other thing that's going to be going on this Fourth of July. So anyway, I just wanted to throw that in, Chief. Anyway, if you've got a question, yeah, go ahead.
Hi. We all know that the Fourth this year is on a Friday. What does that mean for Saturday out here? Isn't it on a Friday? I must have looked at the wrong year. What if we...
Let's postpone that nightmare for another year.
What happens on Friday?
On Friday, fireworks are not allowed, I believe. And so fireworks will be not allowed, but we will probably see a lot of residual campers on the beach, as we usually do. And as in last year on the 5th, we had campers in the dunes and lighting small campfires in the dunes for hot dogs or whatever, along with their four coolers full of beer, which becomes the problem. And so we'll be patrolling on the 5th as well. We're going to have extra staff on the 5th. And I did, I was remiss, I wanted to remember to say this, your fire chief, Brian Ritter, you've got a great fire chief there. He had to go to a very urgent county EMS meeting tonight for an urgent matter, or he would be here tonight as well. Brian, the fire chief, and I will also try to be, the best we can try, on a top-floor room of the shilo, so we have a balcony with binoculars, megaphones, communication pieces, so that we can actually see much of the stretch of the beach, so we can see something before anybody else does and get our folks moving in that direction. Is there another question back there?
Yes, thank you, and thank you very much in the city for doing this. So if it's 6:00 at night, what's the phone number that we're supposed to call, either police or fire? And is there phone numbers, because we know that the offices are closed, so what, can you tell us the numbers that we should be looking to?
Yeah, you call, well, you can call 911, and when they pick up the phone, you can say non-emergency if it's not an emergency, or if it's an emergency, they'll ask you police, fire, medical. They'll ask you the normal questions, so they know which units to start rolling, and then they'll ask you some questions, specific location, your name, a contact number to get a call back if we need it. But if you want to copy this number down, there's a non-emergency 911 center phone, and that phone number is 360-533-8765. The 911 operators are going to be extremely busy because they're dispatching for the entire county, and so you might have that phone ring for 10 rings before somebody picks it up, and if, and they appreciate when you let them know if it's emergency or non-emergency, so they can tend to the more critical calls first.
All right, so if I see smoke coming from the dune area, then just call...
I'd call 911.
One.
That's a true emergency.
Ocean shores, smoke, and it is a true emergency?
Yes, if there's smoke in the dunes, we want to, during this particular period in time, that's a true emergency for us. We want to get out there and get well ahead of that.
And this applies also if there's, for police, if there's some fighting or something going on out there?
Yeah, the difference between calling 911 or calling the non-emergency number is, dial 911 if there's a threat to property or persons. If there's not any kind of immediate or imminent threat to either of those two, then just call the non-emergency number.
All right. Thank you.
So the week of Fourth of July and a little bit before that week starts, there'll be a lot of pushing of information on the city website, the city's social media page, the fire's social media page, and the police's social media page, and something that we worked really well last year and the 911 dispatchers appreciated is, we put out this tool that says, call 911, call non-emergency, because of the impact that the call log is for 911, but that's where you're going to get a lot of emergency, as the mayor said, with the flags. There'll be a map of those, so everybody can have a map, you can pass that around, and we'll have that pinned to the top of all of those pages and in our alert system that's on the front page of the website for everybody, so as we get closer, make sure you're kind of spreading that word, and if you haven't signed up for e-notify, that's going to be the time you want to get that done, because you're going to get a ping every time we update. We are looking into some informational pieces that will ping your cellphones, but we don't have all that worked out quite yet, but that's going to be a big tool, especially for all of them, because that's going to be how you tell people, or tell them, where you are.
Any other questions?
Kind of a two-part, how many vehicles would you estimate show up, just a guess?
Can you repeat that?
How many vehicles would you say, a guess, show up on the beach?
Private vehicles, you mean?
Yeah, private vehicles on the beach. If you look down, you're like, wow, there's a lot of people lighting up, so how many vehicles do you estimate?
You have, you...
Just approximate.
On our beach, from...
I hear it swells pretty big.
It swells pretty big. We have guesses, depending on if it's a weekday or weekend. A weekday, we can get around 20,000 vehicles out there.
Gotcha.
A weekend, we can be pushing closer to 30.
So 20,000, say, half of those, 10,000. Each one has a radio, minimum 100 watt, and 100, that's a million watts. We have a new tower with our KOSW radio station, and it hits the beach great. My idea, I'm thinking, is maybe be the background music for the chaos. I'm not saying we organize it, but we're the background music. We say, hey, 10 o'clock, patriotic music's on a play, we get a bunch of people to play, you're going to hear, you know, KOSW, but at the same time, we'd have PSA announcements and all this stuff for people to know, and you'd have a direct line of communication, a one-way broadcast, so something to think about. A lot of us are already set up, we just have to do marketing, maybe put signs on the beach, let people know, hey, turn 88.9, have the good music, something they're going to listen to all day, call it Blast the Beach, or who knows what. 10 o'clock, the patriotic music starts and, you know, start singing Little Vayner from Hendrix, whatever, you know, have a little thing locally, have people pick what gets to play, but it's there, it's something to use, and it's a great signal right now. Thank you. It could be about a million watts if it's 10,000 vehicles. I'm just taking half. It's like a big drive-in theater, just think, you know, don't think we're organizing the show. I wouldn't say we're promoting illegal fireworks, we're just using a tool that's there for
So I don't know if anyone got my little novella of suggestions I sent to Scott and Frank, but is there a plan to try and improve traffic flow on the beach approaches? Like, having marked lanes would probably go a long way of, like, hey, don't be in this area, like, don't park here, instead of just having it a free-for-all.
That is one of the things we've been discussing this year, of putting barriers up so that people cannot park, so it is just two-way only out there, so that's something that we're going to try this year and see how that works. But it's going to be kind of an experimental thing every year, to try something a little bit different. This is the first time we've actually tried something to mitigate that issue. I don't think that it's going to help the traffic flow any faster, especially when it comes time for the tide to come in and people are rushing to get off the beach. It's not going to help with that, but it should help at least keep people going in the same, you know, in the directions they should be going, instead of trying to park on the side.
Yeah, last year was so bad, like, bikes couldn't even get through, just because cars were just stopped in the middle of the road. Also, is there, you mentioned having a lookout at the top of the shilo. Would there be any value of putting a call-out to licensed drone pilots in the community to just start flying around, keep an eye out for fires in the dunes? I know there's a lot of drone owners in the city, and they'd be more than happy to volunteer.
Yeah, I don't, I know I've seen pictures of, that drones have taken from up there. I don't know that people really want to put them up there and put them as targets, because that's kind of what they become.
I'm fairly, I'm fairly sure you used one of my pictures in your slide, so...
Way to go.
If they, they can fly high enough to be out of range of fireworks, so it might be an idea, just to have more eyes.
Yeah, we've got drones, and we can put them in the air, but we probably wouldn't put them in the air directly over the beach, we'd probably put them at a specific height, enough to see them float around on the Hydune Trail perhaps, or something like that. We can, we can, we might even try that this year with our drone.
Hey Matt, I just wanted to say what Nikki was talking about. So we're planning on keeping that roadway clear for emergency vehicles and people coming and going at the beach, with blocking it up, and probably try some caution tape of some kind in between the concrete blocks, you know, to keep that clear. So we've talked about that, and we looked at what you sent us, so thanks for that.
If you should decide to go ahead with the KOSW as a resource, which I think is a great concept, and then possibly trying to help people understand what options are available to them, I don't know if you already utilize the electronic reader board out here, but that might be something to say, you know, tune into KOSW for alert information, et cetera. Just a thought.
Got a question up front.
I love the idea with the Hydune Trail, family-friendly and all that, that's a really great idea. My question is, how are you proposing to get this information out there as far as the plan for that? Are you planning to get that out there?
Yeah, we've got a plan to get out on that, we're going to have some signs placed out there for that. Also, family-friendly, we'll leave part of that trail open for Avert to patrol it, or if we need to get medical in there for that. And we'll advertise that when it gets closer, that that's what it'll be set up for.
This is regarding the Hydune's Trail. I know that the scooters have to be allowed, what are those things they ride on? Skateboards, motorized skateboards, but possibly the night of the fireworks, it might, if, they're a real hazard to some people out there when there's not many people on it, and I don't know if they could be discouraged that particular night, or, you know, walk it instead of run it. Just a thought.
Well, we haven't talked about it, but we will. It could be a dangerous situation, what you're saying, for sure. Any other questions?
I know we do like our tourists and our regular people here, but it's a tremendous amount of cleanup, and will there be a lot of dumpsters and encouragement to pack it out and places to dump it? Thank you.
Yeah, they're going to have dumpsters at each approach again, just because the dumpsters are easier to contain any of the fires, it's easier for these guys to put them out when they're actually in dumpsters, when people are packing up their hot fireworks and throwing them in there. It happens every year, and it will continue to happen, but yeah, they'll have dumpsters at each one of the approaches.
There'll be bags handed out, you know, to everybody as they come in to the beach, and we've got volunteer groups to do that, so we'll do as much as we can, and then we'll have to clean up on the 5th, because some people just don't want to use a bag to put Any other questions?
One other comment is that as a precautionary measure, when the dumpsters are put out there, before the day starts, we pre-foam them with a fire retardant, and that really helps keep things more manageable. We still get little fires in there, but putting the foam in there really helps.
I asked, I put this in my list of suggestions, is there any plans of making the dumpsters more accessible? Because with just one of the ends open, it's hard to throw a lot of the light trash to the other end, and it just all piles up on that one open end. Could we get like, like a stair scaffolding or something, so people can walk up higher to throw it over the top of the dumpster?
I could see a lot of fall injuries from the stairs, because by 10 o'clock at night, those coolers are pretty empty.
You might have to blow in the tube before you get the authorization to climb a ladder.
This is just kind of a question I'm curious about. Do you have a cost on what the Fourth of July actually costs the city?
We can get that later, you know, after this Fourth of July.
I'm just wondering if Chief Mandela, does the fire association, I think it is, right, the nonprofit portion, do they ever consider going out there with the boots and collecting the nonprofit money, you know, $5 in a boot kind of thing? Or maybe we just charge five bucks a carload when they come through the gates? Crazy, I know.
Well, that's another opportunity for revenue for the city. However, we haven't got a person to spare with a boot or otherwise, but it would be something for the association to consider to put a, it would have to be guarded, people can throw money in something, but yeah, we, every single body that we have is working, and more. We have all our volunteers, we have volunteers from Avert and others. Nobody gets the Fourth of July off, except for two people on a bid, and that's it, everybody else is working and bringing them in from home on overtime.
This is a question that is important to know. I have not called down to Pacific County. Do we know if Long Beach is not, I know they stopped, yeah, last year they didn't do fireworks, from what I understand. Are we the only city on the coast doing fireworks this year? Or is that something I should call and find out, because that will impact the number of visitors to come here if Long Beach isn't doing it?
Yeah, I don't think either of us know that for sure, but I did hear just recently that they are not doing fireworks, but I only have that second-hand information.
That's what I've heard too. So let's call down there and find that out, because if we are the only destination doing it, we can anticipate more people.
I got the right year this time. Can volunteers carry the boot and do a boot drive for the fire association?
The fire volunteers, you mean?
No.
Oh, volunteer people.
People, residents.
I guess that's a topic for the association to decide. There's a, there's a process for those kind of things, and I could bring that up to Kara, I think she's still the president. Thank you for, thanks for thinking of us.
I know it's been considered before to eliminate fireworks in Ocean Shores on the Fourth of July. Has any thought been given to that? Because it is pretty smoky and smelly, and scary to even walk on the beach, and it's been talked about before.
That is a big day for the businesses here in Ocean Shore, so I don't see that coming
I'm going to put the chief on the spot here. Not the assistant chief, the chief. So we all know my great cause lately. What happens with all the animals and dogs to get loose and running around if the kennel gets at capacity?
You get a lot more calls. Unfortunately, we double up. We have never really had that situation. We usually, is pretty quick after picking them up, the owners are contacting us, or they've contacted us ahead of time, saying, hey, I've lost my dog, and then we come across it. it, um, in the past, we've, we've never really had any dogs longer than an hour or so, um, from the 4th of July, but we do end up picking up a lot of them.
Getting part of the information out there is making sure that people have information on their pets, contact information and all that, uh, to, to expedite, uh, since the officers and everybody is going to be so busy, so.
A, a lot of the pets are the people coming into town, the campers coming into town, um, that, you know, they, they leave their dog at the campsite, go out to the beach, and the dog panics because of the fireworks that are going off that shouldn't be going off in the neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Um, and they get spooked, and then they come back, you know, hours later, and their ride always gone.
Yeah.
Um, and that's when we, we get the calls, and we may already have them picked up, or we may pick them up later.
Yeah, um, and I'll probably coordinate with you more, um, when it gets close to that time, and the volunteers that we're on board to, to, to just try and expedite and help everybody out in that situation too, if it starts becoming over, overbearing, so, thank you.
Do you have one, oh, there, in, in the back.
As a follow-up to Chief Logan, we've heard about the impact on the fire department, what's the impact on the police department?
We're busy, we're very busy, um, with our limited manpower, uh, we probably, on a weekday, 4th of July, we will average about 100 calls, um, and if it falls on a weekend, we're about, add another 50 calls to that, um, and those, that's just the calls that we count, that doesn't count all of the, where we're driving around and get all of the, the fireworks that we stop, and instead of burdening our dispatch center with each one of these, we just handle it and move on, um, or the illegal fires that are going on that we stop and handle and just move on, um, so, we probably add another 50 to that, I know that I myself, on the 4th of July, I'll probably handle at least 15 to 20 that I'd never call out on dispatch, so they're never counted, um, so if you count each one of the officers doing pretty close to the same, we, our call count would be up there quite a bit, and our dispatch would absolutely hate us. Um, right, um, so, yeah, we, we're pretty busy, um, we don't do a lot of self-initiated things, um, just because of the amount of people that come in, we never know when something's going to happen, that they're, we're going to need all of us, um, especially out on the beach, um, we get, you know, a handful of the, the missing children, or the missing elderly people that wander away and can't find their way back to the cars that they were at, um, and don't know where they are on the beach, um, to be able to, you know, tell anybody where they came from, which, this year with the flags out there, hopefully will help that, um, and help us find people faster, or help them find themselves and get themselves back to their vehicles faster, um, you know, we, we get the few cars of stolen vehicle reports, that the vehicles are actually stolen by the ocean, um, because they park their car, they don't understand the tides that we have, and they park their car and walk away from it for an hour or two, and come back and, you know, call us and say, somebody stole my car, and like, is that the one right out there? Um, you know, we, we get our fights, you know, our, our larger fights, um, out on the beach, thankfully, nobody's really gotten seriously hurt in them, um, you know, we get our assaults that, that we have to deal with, um, most of the stuff, um, we get a, a few calls out on the beach, quite a few out of, actually, out of the night, but most of them are in town that we get called to, um, so we, we stay pretty spread out unless it's a call that requires more than one officer to respond to it, we stay pretty spread out throughout the city, but, yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty hectic and, and kind of nerve-wracking at times, the officers are working a minimum of 12-hour shifts, um, depending on, on how things are going, they can work 14 to 16 hours shifts on the 4th of July, um, the days leading up to it, everybody's working, everybody is working the long shifts on the 4th of July itself, the fact that most of these people are going to, or a lot of them are going to be staying in town through the weekend, uh, we'll have, every, everybody probably from the 2nd, um, which is, what, going to be Tuesday, um, through Sunday, um, everybody will get one day off in that, in that period, and so, and everybody's got their normal days off at each end of that also, but it's all mandated over time, nobody gets the time off, nobody gets to take vacation, everybody has to be out there.
So I have actually two questions, but the first one is, since that is a state highway, do you get any assistance from State Patrol at all?
Absolutely not.
Can we start with question?
Um, well, being, 4th of July being a national holiday, we're not a priority out here, um, and I don't think I've ever seen a State Patrol unit out here, I think even on a normal day, summertime, um, we, we saw our first one, well, since I've been here, um, last summer, um, and it was just in the middle of the summer, it wasn't on 4th of July, it's, we don't see State Patrol in our city whatsoever, much less on the beach, their rigs don't go on the beach.
And that's unfortunate, you know, there's been other issues too, out there, picking up the trash and all of that, but.
State Parks goes out there, um, and they, they try and bring extra people in, um, but from what I understand, they're really limited this year also, with what they're bringing in, um, but they usually leave our section of beach to us, and they go north, because they've got a lot of beach to cover north, um, and when, you know, on a good year, I think they had 10 that, that covered as far north as the beach can go, um, I think this year they're only going to have four extra, so, um, they're, they're extremely limited on what they have, but if, if we need them, they'll get here as fast as they can, which isn't real fast on 4th of July, but they try, um, they try and help us out a little bit.
Well, that, that makes us, I guess, even more grateful for the volunteers that we do have that go out, and the beach cleanups, and the jeeps, and all of that, that we go out, um, so I know a lot of people get upset on the 4th of July when somebody's setting fireworks off in town, which isn't allowed, um, but then, I, and I know people get upset, well, they didn't come out, or whatever, so, I'm, I would rather, can you explain as far as priority-wise, and, and, you know, that we can't rush out there, but explain kind of what a priority it is to you as far as fireworks being set up on tan, off in town?
It, it's not a super hype, we're not going to run lights and sirens to go to a fireworks call, by any means, um, if we're in the area, we'll check in the area, like seeing the speeders that pass you on the highway, where's a cop when you need them? Um, setting, yes, says it a lot, um, it's, setting off fireworks is one of those offenses that we have to witness ourself, um, so if we're not seeing it happen, we can't, we have no justification for doing anything, even approaching the people necessarily, if they're on the street, we'll stop and talk to them, but if they're on their property, we don't have a lot of, of pull to do anything about it, um, so, if we're in the area, we will absolutely check on it, um, if we're not in the area at the time, we'll, we'll mosey that way, we'll get there, um, and we'll roll around in the area, a lot of, a lot of the problem is, when people call in, um, saying that there's fireworks going off, they don't actually know where it's coming from, um, they're not actually seeing it going off in the street, they're seeing it in the air, so they're not sure where it's coming from, they're hearing it, you know, coming from someplace close, so they're giving us a general area, and so, you know, they see us coming way before we see them, even if they're just setting off the fireworks, so, we, sneaking around for us, not really possible, um, especially when, uh, when there aren't any streetlights, uh, you know, it's like, and we're not going to drive without our headlights on, because there's no streetlights, so, um, that, that was easier when I worked in a city that actually had streetlights, we could do that, and, and sneak up on people a little bit easier, not so easy here, um, because when it's dark, it's dark, um, but yes, we, we want people to call, um, but it, it's a lot more helpful to us if you actually have a, a more specific area where we need to be to look for these, um, for the fireworks going off.
Do we have a spot for like, a life light or helicopter evac?
Can you repeat that?
Uh, do we have a spot for like, a helicopter, like, a life light evac, if we need one?
We will usually meet them at, um, down at Hogan's Corner, or, uh, what's the other one?
Yeah, yeah. Right.
Bowerman and Hogan, we have an airport here, we could land them, it's all situational, uh, because on the 4th of July, they're not going to come anywhere near the beach.
Any other questions?
Well, okay, I want to thank everybody for coming, uh, thank Assistant Chief Mike Mandela and Police Chief Nikki Logan for, uh, informing everybody that what the plan is for, uh, the 4th of July, so, thanks again for coming, um, we'll see you at the next one.
Let me just give one shout-out to the police department, today is Police Memorial Day, Police Officer Memorial Day, that's why you see the flags at half-mast, up and down point brown, uh, so, let's, uh, remember that all the, all the police officers who made that Supreme Circuit.